Good morning, this is the Knox County Commissioners Board meeting at May sixth, two thousand twenty five. Where our first item on the agenda is our public carrying for salt Brian application. From TD Petroleum, which is in the Danville area. Um, I see that no one is here actually to uh have any discussion about the the application. Um, so Jason, I think we can proceed to do that resolution.
I'm not here, right? There you have it then. So yeah, we have a resolution to approve that salt Brian for TD patrolling.
So take a motion for that?
A motion to approve.
Second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have Courtney set down for MHR. That may fourth through May tenth is public service recognition recognition week. And so she had a resolution that she had asked you to consider for adoption.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
And all those favors say aye, aye?
Okay, um. Approve a memorandum of understanding between Ohio Department of Transportation, the county engineer and the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office. And this is relating to Kukocin, you know, scenic river and the replacement of the Cook Road Bridge. Over the tributary and replacing that over the north branch of the Kukocin, so like that's what was required to go through. All of those entities to get approval to.
To be able to take the bridge out, yes, but take a motion?
My motion to approve that.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I know Cameron had to jump through a lot of hoops just to be able to take that bridge out and get it. Get another one in there that was safe.
That one does require your all three signatures on that. Okay, then we have approve a bond release for, I believe it's ZAO. Group LLC, so this they started directional boring back in September of two thousand twenty one and that work has all been completed. So they have requested uh through the county engineer that that bond be released.
Motion to approve.
One one thing first.
So everything's been completed, you know?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. That only requires bill signing on that one. Uh, then we have. Approve an auction contract with Jagger auctioneers, Jagger auctioneer for the county engineer to sell his two unneeded. Vehicles or ones that were replaced.
Big motion?
My second then.
I make a motion.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
And that does require one signature on that, I didn't see. And then we have the um. Uh, so approve the rural transit program to state fiscal year twenty twenty five grant sub award and this is from two. Between the Ohio Department of Transportation and Knox County Transit for a hundred sixty six thousand, this is their uh normal funding that they get.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those favors say aye.
Aye.
You know, contractor agreement between the Knox County Department of Job and Family Services and Ohio District Five area on aging for adult protective services. And um. This, I'm sorry, this is an amendment for the contract for last year's contract. Increasing it by three thousand two hundred three dollars and ninety six cents. Um, increasing out of contract from a hundred sixty thousand to one sixty to two oh three ninety six. And this is finishing up last year's contract that they have.
Motion to approve.
Second, all those favors say aye.
Aye.
Now we're going to do this year's contract, so now we're approving. The contract between JFS and Ohio District Five area on aging for adult protective services. And this is for one hundred and sixty thousand dollars and it runs from April first of twenty five through March thirty first of twenty six.
Quick question.
This is paid for out of senior levy funds.
Quick question, we were at one sixty last time with them and they asked for more, so we're at one sixty again, am I reading that right?
It was, I think there was some additional funding, JFS gets a little bit of funding from the state and I think they put some additional funding for some. Work that was done by them, so that's what the addendum was, but the this year's request was still one sixty. For senior levy funds and that's what they were, they were awarded.
I have a motion to approve.
My second.
And all those favors say aye.
Aye.
We have a memorandum of understanding between Knox County Department of JFS, local workforce seven. Or local workforce area seven, and this is the workforce innovation. And opportunities, this is kind of that news that Randy is part of out there, other. Yes, other areas and that workforce seven, and so there's no hash or cost, it's just this is a memorandum of understanding for them to work together. And this runs from July first of twenty five through June thirtieth of twenty seven.
Taking motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those favors say aye, aye?
And we have a participation agreement regarding the usage of the agreement between the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. And the uh Knox County Department of Job and Family Services, Child Support, Local Services, Non-Custodial Parents, if we do this every year, correct Penny? This is a standard resolution uh for job and family services.
Motion to approve.
Second, all those favors say aye.
This this just require one signature for me? There's two lines on there, but. Should they all sign it?
I'm not sure, I'll see in it again.
It it just says buy and there's two lines, maybe maybe they want it printed, maybe they want it printed, probably sign, probably.
Yeah. There's so much, there's so many.
So there's two lines on here, you'll print your name on one and then sign on the other.
And I'll use the auto pin.
The auto pin.
And then the sheriff has submitted his monthly meal report for April. They were seven thousand three hundred forty six meals prepared at one dollar seventy two cents per meal.
Motion to approve.
I'm gonna go back to a couple of things with the sheriff's office. I get the number. How many people did that serve, I I mean, we're just throwing numbers out there and I guess I could divide it.
They just give until meals because the head count obviously changes daily at the table, so they just give us a.
And when he gives us his prisoner account, I'd like to know the longevity. That their the average longevity and the differentiation between male and female that that are in.
You know, that's yeah, that merely thought that's just the way they've always presented that as total meals and then. What's the cost from meal, so okay, yeah.
Total cost. For all for all the food and supplies.
Right.
And then from like April one to April thirtieth, how many meals they serve?
At a dollar twenty nine a meal.
Sounds like you're eating, isn't it?
You can eat on that hour seventy nine, okay?
Motion to approve.
Second, and all those favors say aye. I need this off. Yeah, I see Barry comes in the morning with a Dr. Pepper and one of those pies, fruit prides. And that's Dr. Pepper's probably a dollar at least, so yeah. So maybe you can do that there and come good.
And the last item we have is just to approve that Knox County Trader deposit where you have for April. And the amount of two hundred four thousand two hundred eighty two dollars and eighty cents. And then that was general fund interest. Separate from that was eleven thousand four seventy seven forty in programming income of two dollars and seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Just down to, I mean, it doesn't have to be stolen. So we're still waiting on bill, looks like we've got a couple steps of minutes, there is one transfer. And the bill was. And then, Commissioner, we would, I would like to add one item at the end of today's meeting for executive. And our purchase. Uh, to consider the purchase of of property.
Okay.
Uh, there'll be no action, but it's just to discuss.
Then uh. For my portion of uh or our portion of Commissioner stuff, um. And the village of Amity. Received a letter from the uh Department of Transportation. That they're going to improve the intersection of Upper Frack Town and Route Three. And part of the improvement of the intersection is doing sidewalk going north and sidewalk going south. Um, I sent a letter to ODOT and I said. It looks like it's going to be a partial job if you don't take it all the way down to the store at at Amity. And they said that um only at the intersection area that um. Person that they're working on is in the state right away. They believe that the sidewalk going on down to the store would not be, and so. I sent an um an email out to um the uh fiscal officer at uh at I Township. Um, telling them that um if they want to pursue um adding that sidewalk down through there to let us know. Um, because we could see about maybe getting grant funding, this is a project that's supposed to take place uh May first of two thousand twenty six, so it's a little ways out there. So something could be done, I know a couple of years ago there were people from Amity asking uh the commissioners if. We could help them not getting sidewalks. Um, I talked to Amy Chalkton um about public grants monies and we said Amity was too rich of a community uh for that to be done. Uh, I knew Bryn came and went ahead and did a survey, finance survey, and were able to get into the uh braces of of that, so. Anyway, I kicked it over to the trustees.
It's it's going from the sidewalk from the church to the dollar store out there pretty much.
Uh, yes, that's yeah, because I have the documents here.
And they're saying that that sidewalk can't go that far because it's.
It's out of their domain, I know that it's been an issue there in Amity uh at the church. Uh, many years ago, the state said you can't park between the sidewalk and Route Three. Which a lot of people at the United Methodist Church, the Methodist Church there would park there, but the state says that's a no-no. Um, and I think part of what they're doing when they do the sidewalk down by the one apartment to the Frack Down, the end of the area. They're they're saying we're going to grow grass uh and put sidewalk and you can't park on the grass and so. A whole different thing, but anyway, I wanted you to be aware that Amity has that possibility of um being big town. Uh, but we need to see about putting some things in action then to do that. Uh, and then I I I see that our that Bob Snively is here, so Bob, if you could come in. Um, Bob Snively is from Palmer Energy, uh he's going to talk about um Knox County's aggregate program.
Hey Bob, I'm sure he's doing good, Jason. Appreciate you coming in. Yeah, absolutely. Couple of messages, Commissioner, how you doing, Bob Snively? Palmer Energy.
Very much.
Get your email, you're.
Oh, okay. Good to see you again. Um.
Bob, maybe before you start to share the public connection, it's kind of what are the.
That's right.
With CCAO and your involvement.
Yeah, absolutely, Jason. Um, so my name's Bob Snably, I work for Palmer Energy, uh we're energy consultants um for the CCAO. Um. We have been working with the counties since, I believe it's. Two thousand eight, two thousand nine timeframe. Um, we've been working with, we're we're based out of Cleveland, we've been working with Lucas County long before that. Uh, we got involved with the CCAO, they had an energy program. Um, when we got involved, it was it was relatively small, it was just natural gas at the time. Um, and they were looking to expand it, and so. We went through an RFP process with the CCAO uh and ended up being selected. And so a program that I think began with like twelve or fourteen counties at the time, we've grown to, I think we're over seventy in one capacity or another. Um. So we do electric and gas um purchasing for county facilities, which is kind of what I'm here to talk to you about today. Uh, and then we also do aggregation, um. And that's probably the fastest growing side of our business. For if you're not familiar with aggregation, it's basically the grouping together, um. Basically, it's a ballot issue, if approved, um. It gives the entity, whether it's the unincorporated areas of a county or the incorporated areas of a village or a city. The benefit of grouping together to get a discount on electric generation or or the commodity natural gas, um. So I've been with Palmer for twelve years, uh we sort of split up the the counties between three of us. Um. And uh kind of what I'm here to talk to you today about is RFP results uh for county facilities. So um. I think it was about a year and a half ago, uh we went to all the counties and. We had kind of, we've kind of grown the the county facilities part of of the CCAO program to the point where um. There's really not many more counties that that we can. That we can work with because you're either have uh co-op uh or or um small uh natural gas utilities. Uh, we can only work with the the larger utilities. And so we've we've pretty much got all the counties that we can outside of maybe a couple. And when we got to this point, our idea was. We kind of use purchasing power for the county facilities. Uh, inside of the county, so all of your departments group together to get a, you know, a single price uh per kilowatt hour electricity and then. Um, per MCF on natural gas or CCF. Um, and so what we thought, what we've been doing for gas for a while is taking all of the county facilities. Um, putting them in a pool group and if you're in the same utility, having suppliers bid on that because it just amplifies your purchasing power. And um. A year and a half ago, we we figured we have enough counties now at this point where we can try to do that for electricity. And uh that's what we've done, and so the CCAO uh Energy Board signed a contract on behalf of all the participating counties. Uh, and those are the results that I have uh to go over with you today. Um, before I start that, are there any questions about CCAO or Palmer?
No, we get to report.
Okay, great. Good, excellent. So what I'm going to hand you first is kind of an update on capacity, uh which makes up about. Right now, it's about thirty five percent. Uh, of your per kilowatt hour price. Um. And it's it's, there's there's been a a kind of a major change in capacity, the the second part I'm handing out is the actual results, the RFP. And so um. So i- if. If you're kind of paying paying attention to the electric market or 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 the per kilowatt hour prices that utilities have given or suppliers have given over the last. Really, um. You know, if you've got contracts ending now going forward, you've seen a a pretty significant increase and and that has to do uh mainly with capacity. So capacity is basically the ability. Of our grid, which is PJM, to produce enough electricity to meet our demand, so. There aren't blackouts or gray outs or anything like that. Um, and so so that's PJM, that's PJM's mandate, make sure we have enough electricity. Um, and. We've we, one of the main reasons for such a. Tremendous increase in the cost of capacity. Is a demand, you know, demand related, so AI is obviously a a new thing and has really sort of picked up steam over the last. Year, year and a half, um and associated with that are data centers. And data centers are are major uses of our electricity. Uh, one of the most amazing stats about how much energy a data center uses is that annually, one data center will use the equivalent of four hundred and fifty thousand households.
Right.
So just if if you put two of those together, you've virtually got the residential load of Columbus.
Wow.
So huge, huge uh users of electricity. And and so if you look at the su- supply and demand dynamic, we've got a huge demand coming online, so what what's happening with our supply? Uh, well, over the last few years, we've we've closed down uh. Uh, coal-fired electric generation plants. Um, some have been switched to natural gas, I think we'll probably see more of that in the future. There is an article in the Wall Street Journal, I think two, about two weeks ago where they have. They have planned uh shutdowns of coal generation plants, they're no longer doing, they're going to keep them operating. And and a lot of that reasoning is because we need all the electric generation that we can get at this point. Um. Because we have such a huge supply and demand uh imbalance. Um. One of the other reasons for the significant increase in capacity. Uh, is how the the, how PJM evaluates renewables. So uh renewables being solar, um, wind, those are the, those are the two largest ones, um. And and how PJM evaluates that sort of electric generation. Obviously, the difficult part about that is if you've got the sun shining, you're producing electricity, it's going onto the grid, which is great. If you've got a day like today, not as much sun, not producing as much. Um, it's not reliable generation. Uh, the same thing with wind, when the wind blows, you're producing electricity, if it's not, you're not. Uh, we don't have the battery figured out there yet, at least in an economic way. Um, there are batteries out there, but they're expensive. Um. And so what had happened over the previous. Few years is um. For PJM, that was a little too close for comfort with regards to do we, wh- when there's the most demand on the grid, do we have enough supply? And as far as I understand, we we did, I don't believe there are any blackouts or gray outs, but it was getting. You know, uncomfortably close for the folks at PJM, who's again, whose mandate is to make sure that there's enough electric generation to to feed the grid. And so um.
Would you share, um, because we're we're live streaming to PJM, how many, how much territory?
Yeah, sure, that's absolutely, I should have done that to begin with, so PJM stands for Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland. Um, it's the largest uh electric grid in the country. Uh, it starts in Maryland, kind of works its way up through Pennsylvania, encompasses all of Ohio. Uh, and then sort of carves out through Illinois, Chicago, so the rest of Chicago's on MISO, which is a different grid, but Chicago is PJM. Um, and and so that's kind of regionally, um. Where where PJM is. Uh, and and so. Kind of switching gears to to. You know, the increase that I mentioned, so to just to put some numbers to it. Um, the per megawatt day and and you can see the the graph on the third page here. Uh, the the rate for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, so capacity years runs June to June. Uh, was twenty nine dollars and fifty cents, which is very historically low. Um, you can think about this as this is sort of. Put in place before the the real run-up in AI and before data centers kind of been the the been really discussed. To increasing to two hundred and seventy thirty five, so almost a a ten X increase uh in capacity, and you can kind of see that uh. Displayed on on uh on the graph there. Um. And so the, again, the reasoning behind that has to do with with supply and demand issues. Um, looking forward. Uh, it's an interesting question as to how this problem's going to be solved. Uh. One of two things needs to happen, either, you know, we're not going to be able to power. Uh, the data centers and and the growth of AI, which obviously. People want that to happen, I mean, we're in a, you know, a race against China as far as that goes. Um, but we also have to have the energy to be able to do that. Because if you don't, you can't. And so where are we going to get the energy from? And so that's a question that um. We don't have a lot of answers for yet. Um, so capacity numbers generally used to be given three years in advance, so you can kind of know, know plan for it and so forth. It's gotten down to. A year, sometimes less than a year now, as far as when we know those capacity numbers, which is tough because obviously then you have less time to react. Um, and so I I explain that, and the reason I go over that is is um to sort of. Explain, you know, coming out of a contract where you're in the five to six cent range. And then looking forward as to why things are more expensive now than they were, and that's that's the kind of the. The major reasoning behind the increase uh in the per kilowatt hour price.
So. If if we look at the aggregate or the co-op. Just in general, what what's our savings being in that versus straight out pay, you know what I mean by that?
So it, that's a good question, Commissioner, so it 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 depends on on what the utility pricing is. And so the utility pricing changes um month to month. But when we look at it, we look at an average, so to give you an example, the average price to compare starting in June. Um, in the uh. A and P territory. I remember off, is is right around ten cents, just under ten cents, and so um. We we know that number, we pay attention to the the utility. Um, they they buy electricity in tranches and it's publicly known, and so we pay attention to that when we're going through RFP because. You know, our main goal is to save money versus the utility, because if you're not doing that, then then, you know, obviously, that's that's not unofficial. Um, and so uh we keep that in mind uh when we make our recommendations. And so um. As far as as the results, um, I think that's probably a good segue.
Um, well, I don't know, you answered his question.
I'm sorry, I I I thought.
He's going to the segue.
Okay.
What's the average?
Oh, uh, savings, uh, we usually say.
Us being in an aggregate.
No, no, that's fine, it's 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 between, generally, it's between ten and fifteen percent, I mean, that's kind of what we'd say over the long term. Um, over the past three years, it's been like thirty, forty percent.
Okay.
We had a hu- over the last two to three years, I know, Commissioner, you know this from just going, us going over this. Over the last two to three years, um, there's been a big. Um, imbalance between the wholesale electric market and and utility pricing. That's starting to level out right now. Uh. You know, um, I think the last few times I've been in here, I I've kind of mentioned, we've gone over savings analysis since it's been thirty, forty percent. And and every time I try to end the conversation, this is not normal. You know, uh, ten to fifteen percent is kind of what we've seen historically, thirty to forty is just. You know. Um, it's icing on the cake, you know, as far as and 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 makes the point as to why we do this. Um, but it's 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 really not. Something to be expected going forward.
Got you.
Yeah, and that's the part I think, it it's been difficult because we, you know, to really quantify it, it's difficult because we've. Done the infrastructure projects, we try to get efficiencies, right, when you win those new H.
Right.
We've done a lot of work at the at the Knox County Jail. To try to reduce electric usage, well, if you just look at straight bill. It 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 doesn't tell you that because the cost is going up, right, so we, our jurisdiction could be down. Cost is up, so we're trying to start watching that in-house now to say, not only what is the cost month to month? But what is the ad phone usage month to month, to see if we're.
No, that's right, it's a, it's a balance, yeah, it's a balance between, you know, it's cliche to say, and it's kind of a joke that we 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 talk about and people say, what's the best way to save energy? And and the answer is really use less. Uh, but that's.
Easily said than that.
Yeah, I remember, we're going in the wrong direction there. Um, but one of the other things, Commissioner, that we do, uh, every October, we we have a a CCO energy meeting, which. You're welcome to to participate in, I. Uh, always encourage all the commissioners to come to. Um, but we also send out savings analysis annually for both electric and gas, and then we also send out a budget, so you'll, you get that every October.
Okay.
Um. And uh, we've done that for. Since the beginning of the program, really. Um, and so you can see, you can kind of see what I'm talking about, where year to year it changes sort of based on what the utility pricing is and where the wholesale market is.
So no futuristic plans as to how you're going to, how more energy is going to be generated?
It's, that's a. If you have the answer to that question here.
I I feel, I mean, you probably being, nuclear is the best way to go, I think everybody's scared to death of it, you know?
Figure out how to get rid of the waste.
So to to, there's the smaller modular units that that's been talked about a lot lately, that there's a lot of promise behind. I think that's definitely going to play a role in the future. The larger nuclear facilities, a- and 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 part of the reason why nuclear is so attractive is 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 very clean.
I mean.
Yeah, a- and and very efficient, um. The the problem with like the large-scale Davis Bessie type nuclear facilities, they take twenty years to build.
Yeah.
Um, we think um. As far as generation goes, what we'll see happen is a lot of the continue uh uh. Switching of of coal-generated power plants to to nuclear. That sort of transition takes about a year. That sort of transition takes about a year, year and a half to two years. Uh, and so, you know, relatively compared to like, you know, a nuclear facility, it's a lot faster.
Yeah.
And, um, we're going to keep seeing renewables, those are going to keep showing up. I think once PJM, um, figure out, figures out a good way to evaluate that. Uh, I think that'll help the capacity numbers, i- i- it's just. The re- the reliability behind that, um. It's not what we call, what's base load generation, which is coal and, you know, runs twenty four sevens, it's reliable. So once, once those questions are answered, I think you'll, we'll start to see that, that capacity number drop. But it's a good question, and, and we need, you know, people say, you know, wh- what, what kind of energy do you, do you want? And the answer is, we need it all, now and more.
Well, you said, did you? You said that you're, they're going to be working on train, for transferring coal plants to nuclear or to, to, uh.
To gas, did I say nuclear?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, excuse me.
And that only takes about a year.
Thank you for catching that, no, no, uh, to natural get from, from coal to natural gas, a year, year and a half to two years. Yeah, apologize, that would be something.
As you say, that's.
And we are in business if that happens.
When PJM looks at like that, those capacities, how do they, how do they take in fluctuations like? We have a. You know, this summer, you hit a period where it's extremely hot, and the demand for AC goes through the roof, but they. Just do some historical trend to look at, assuming that we get one of those every year or something, they build that into the grid.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of a supply and demand equation, but to, to your point, that's. That's why they're reevaluating, uh, the, the renewables is because. How, how do we, how do we account for that? So. You know, the highest demand on the electric grid for, for where we live is, you know, August at. Four o'clock when it's a hundred degrees, because everybody's using air conditioning, that's the main draw. And so, uh, when, when does a solar array work very well? Well. When it's sunny out and a hundred degrees, that's, you know, you're, you're buying, you know, off the, you're, you're off the grid. And so, but it's, but it's not. You know, wh- a day like today, i- it's a totally different profile, so. How do you calculate that? And I think that's what they're, they're working through. And, and when they, and it's a tough calculation. Um, because you don't know when it's going to be sunny, you know? And, and, or when it's going to be windy, and so, um.
In Ohio, rarely.
Yeah. And, and so, um, those are all questions that I think, like I said, when, when. When they, when they come up with a good way to do that, I think that'll help. Um, when, when is that, is, is?
The thing, the thing that concerns me, listening to your conversation is, it sounds to me like. There's a whole lot of rural landscape that's going to have to be given up to produce energy, so we've put ourselves in a situation now where. The rural landscape looks to be penalized for. Ways to build energy or produce energy.
Yeah, the fallout sometimes is, it's like the cure is worse than the disease, because. Going through Allentown, Pennsylvania and other places I saw in the last two years. When they shut those plants down, destroyed the whole community. Uh, jobs were lost, drug addiction went way through the roof, children impacted, uh, domestic violence. All those were repercussions of shutting down something that created so many jobs, and we can see that pattern clearly all across, uh. The nation, but especially in the eastern part where you're talking about, PMJ, PM, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, Commissioner, base, base load generation is what we're looking for right now. Um, because it can be evaluated, we know it's reliable. And so, like, kind of like I mentioned, that, that article two weeks ago in Wall Street Journal, that these were scheduled shutdowns of coal plants that they have ended. Because right now, we're not in a position to shut them.
They had someone in Ohio, they didn't shut them down.
Yeah, I, now, now will those be retrofitted to natural gas? Probably. Um, a- and, and the re- reason for that is, you know, people, people will, it depends on, you know, how, how you wanna. How you want to discuss it, but people will say it's cleaner, which is true, but it's also extremely way more efficient. Um, natural gas generate, generates more electricity than coal does. Uh, a- a- in, in a more efficient way.
And it's abundant.
It, it's a, it's a, exactly, e- exactly, it's, it's abundant. Um, if you're running a, a, you know, if you're just talking about profitability, if you're running a, a, a coal plant, there's. Whatever, two hundred workers maybe. Um, a, a, a natural gas plant might be a quarter of that. Is that good or bad? I mean, it depends on who you ask, you know? Um, but, but those are, those sort of changes are something that I think we'll see first. Before we talk about nuclear, which will be definitely discussed. Um, you know, if you, if you talk about, um. You know, uh, Google or Microsoft, you know, looking at nuclear plants, well, these are nuclear plants that, that were pulled offline, and they're talking about bringing back online. That's not the twenty year project of, of, you know, creating a new one at, or the expense. Um, but, um, it'll be interesting to see, because, um. They don't, the, the large tech companies don't want to slow down on the AIs, but they need the energy. And so, so what's going to happen there? And, and that's, that's a big question, it'll be interesting to see.
And back to Barry's point, we don't want to give up our rural farmland. It's fertile and it's wonderful and food production for solar panels or other forms of non-renewables. That are not as reliable.
I mean, absolutely, um. But that's, that's all, the future will be interesting right now, because right now, if I, I would like, you know. If you, if everybody, if anybody's got the answer to that, you're, you're really seeing into the fistful ball at that point.
So I think it could be worth fortunes.
You have the inside track on that, Commissioner, yes.
So, so, uh, on the, your sheet, you have down for Knox County, the summary of program participants. At Knox County, um, that we had thirty six accounts. And thirty three are group one account and.
Yeah.
Three are in, um, group two.
Yeah, let me go.
About those two towns.
Yeah, let me go through that, Commissioner. So, um, how we did this RFP, um, is we, we broke it into, to three groups. Basically, small, medium and large. Um, the small group, um, is, is group number one, medium two, largest three here. Uh, the small group, uh, are meters that are the, the vast majority of the meters that we have in the program. Y- and they use under seven hundred thousand kilowatt hours, uh, annually. Um, we have pretty much all program participants, we have sixty six counties that are participating in group one. And, uh, about just over thirty eight hundred, uh, meters. Using a hundred and, almost a hundred and ninety three million kilowatt hours. Um, so the small group pricing structure that we use is all inclusive, which means it's. It's not going to change that eight zero four six number, um, is a, is a fixed rate. Uh, through, uh, May of, of twenty twenty seven. Um. The reason for, for the all, for the all-inclusive price is a few reasons, one, you can bug the clock on that pretty easily. Uh, but a lot of these are, are small users and, and a, a lot of these are pumps or, or weight, you know, um. Pumping stations or, uh. Lights in some cases, so, so not yet large users whose, um, load profiles are very similar. Uh, and, and so fluctuation, we're not really as concerned about there as much as we are getting a good fixed competitive price. Um, group number two, uh, and you'll notice that, excuse me, group number one is supplied by DynaG. Group number two, uh, same term, May of twenty twenty seven, CPV energy one, uh, the bid there. And for two and three, you'll see that, that capacity pass through is the pricing structure. And so, you'll see the zero point zero five seven six for six seven for, uh, group number two. Uh, plus the capacity cost is, is, is what your price will be. And so, capacity pass through, um. The, the reason we recommend that is these are generally larger users, so meters, uh, uh, energy users. So between seven hundred thousand and, and four million kilowatt hours annually, we have forty eight counties that participate in that group. And, um. An estimated, uh, number of meters is about a hundred and sixty nine, making up two hundred and fifty four and a half million kilowatt hours. Um, the capacity, so these are larger users. Uh, and capacity pass through, the, the, the way to explain it is. Re- rather than in a fixed rate, you're looking back on the prior year's capacity. Capacity pass through, you're going to be looking at the low profile kind of as it happens. So the capacity por- portion, the, the best way I describe it is, instead of paying estimates, which is sort of what you do. Um, on a fixed price, you'll be paying actuals, and so, so why is that beneficial to the counties? If you're doing a lighting project, or you're changing your HVAC. You're, you're going to be more efficient. And so, if you're in a fixed rate contract, that efficiency won't be reflected until your. Fixed rate contract ends, um, and another one begins, whereas capacity pass through. You'll be able to see those efficiencies, uh, on a month to month basis. So if you do a lighting project, uh, in, in this building or building a light. Um, and it's finished in January, by February or March, uh, you'll be seeing that benefit in capacity. Um, and so, we mentioned before, capacity, you've got the general per megawatt price. But it's different individually based on each meter. So if you've got a, a meter that's, um. You know, using off peak power, their capacity cost is going to be less than, than a household that, that uses on peak power. So compare, say, like a meter for a household versus a sewer plant, where a sewer plant's pump. Runs twenty four hours a day, it's a competitive, um, or, or, uh, uh, you know, uh. I don't want to say it, it is a predictable, uh, amount of energy throughout twelve months, whereas. An evenly, evenly distributed, uh, a household, you know. In the summertime, you're using air conditioning in July, uh, and there's during peak demand season. Um, and so it's not as, uh, not as, um. Beneficial, uh, or it's more beneficial to be in a fixed rate versus a, 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 a capacity passer.
Okay, so let me stop you for a second, I think people's eyes are glazing over.
I.
Um, so for Knox County, we have, um, three, um, uh. Places evidently, we have high usage.
Sure.
Do you know what three of those are?
I would think, pro- this is just, just based on all the, all the counties that I deal with. Probably water sewer, jail.
Yeah.
Jail would probably be another one.
And maybe this building, this, I think.
And then, yeah, so if.
I think those are our three biggest, well, Penny, now you pay the bills, so those are probably the three biggest, right? And then, the oil fields, but those are.
In this building.
Yeah. Um, so, any sort of efficiencies, so in those situat- if, if you're doing any sort of efficiency projects. Those are, are ones that we'll see benefit. Right away, and that's the reasoning behind why we don't do a fixed on price for those.
Good.
Uh, category three doesn't necessarily apply to you, it's, it's the same idea behind the capacity pass through. Uh, those are for meters that are using over four million kilowatt hours. Ten counties, there's only twenty one of them in, in, uh. In our entire, uh, uh, program.
And I think when we looked at ours in years past, the. Obviously, the sheriff's office, they, they use a lot of power, but I think what we found is the water wastewater department between. Not only the plant, the oil field, but all of his pump stations throughout, he's about half of the county's electricity when we did our.
That's right, because we added that.
Yeah, yeah, and that was about half of what we use annually as a county, so.
Well, it's twenty four sevens, never stop, right, right? Nothing gets in the way of that.
Yeah, you're doing a lot, you're doing efficiently with that, where jail, we, we spend a lot of money out there to drive down electric costs, but, yeah, I don't know.
That's how most, most counties about Knox County size are, are all similar to that.
And, so the rates that we have is, but that's just for one year.
Uh, these are through May of twenty twenty seven.
Okay.
So.
So twenty two.
And that's, yeah, yes.
Yep, and then, yeah, everyone has not been paying attention to the June first bills that are going to be coming out. For people, um, one of the dangers that we in the county, our county, um. They are offices, is that we are in that aggregate program, those who are not in an aggregate program outside of. Uh, the city Mount Vernon and our county offices, Frank Towns on an aggregate program. They will be paying a higher rate for their electric bill, because they refuse to pass an aggregate. Um, ballot initiative that we put on twice, and, you know, and we still are baffled as to why. Uh, they didn't want to save money.
Yeah, that's right, Commissioner, as, obviously, as you mentioned, we tried, we, we tried aggregation countywide for the unincorporated areas a couple of times, unfortunately, it did not pass. Um, if it had, we, we would be in, in a fixed rate agreement right now, and the increase in capacity that's coming in June. Um, you know, the savings would just be that much more if, 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 uh, if it had. Um, but yes, correct, the capacity increase coming in June is going to affect all those, um, that are directly with utility.
Well, we tried that, and it flies obviously, but say that, on the second one we did. You had a lot of those countywide, deep, or statewide, do you know how well those did in other places, did, were they successful?
It, it's, we, and I, I've mentioned this before, it depend, in some areas, yes, but mostly for countywide. Especially rural countywide, no, there's, and, and a lot of that has to, you can almost look at how. You, you know, the, the voting differential, and it's almost based on who serves by co-op and who's not. And, and we worked to, you know, to try to, to try to, you know, get to the folks in the co-op to explain them. This isn't going to affect you at all, this is just for the folks who are directly, you know, with AEP, um, but. Generally, anytime there's a, a fair amount of co-op in, in the area, uh, they tend to vote against it, and it, and I don't. What, I don't think it's out of malice or anything like that, I think it's just, they don't understand it, they're afraid it will affect their co-op, so, so they know. Yeah, well, yeah, exactly, and, and so, you know, I, I get it, I, I understand that. Um, but, you know, we've, we tried in a, in a lot of ways to try to get through that, not just here, but in all the counties, and it's just, it's hard to get. You know, people's attention to try to understand this.
True.
I mean, as, as you can tell, it's, it, it can be a very complicated issue.
Oh, yes, yes.
And, and, and frankly, the ballot language doesn't help, we're kind, our hands are kind of tied with that, so it kind of confuses the issue a little bit more. I mean, we've always talked about if, if, uh, you know, if you could put community savings on the ballot. I think you'd probably get a stronger response than governmental aggregation, but, that's, that's.
Misinformation.
Well, that's just, unfortunately, that's, that's. You know, we've, we've talked about, hopefully, you know, we're, we're trying to change the wording and, and just, that's a no-go. Everywhere, all the, all the times that we've tried, so.
Well, we, uh, we appreciate you coming in and.
Thank you, Commissioner, it's nice to meet you both.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations. Um, any, any, any questions or?
No, I'm good, thank you, Bob.
Great, nothing you need to do with this at this point. No, so it's been executed by the, the, the board, uh, just, we're kind of going out to all the counties now, just to make sure. You know that, um, this change is coming, uh, one, one thing I will mention is. Um, it, it might be helpful to send out a note, uh, to your different departments, because. You know, coming in, in, in June, uh, is, is, you'll, it'll show up on the July bill, but the, the transition will happen in June. And you'll start to get letters saying you're changing suppliers to DynaG, or you're changing suppliers for the three accounts to CPV. Just to let the departments know, hey, if you see this, this is what's supposed to be happening. Uh, they don't have to do anything, but they will get, you'll get a bunch of letters, and just so. Keep, keeping all, everybody informed of what's going on is usually a probably, probably a good idea.
Good, that's it.
Thank, thank you very much.
Yeah, have a good week.
Oh, and Commissioner, like, a couple cards for you.
Thank you.
I'll give you another one, Commissioner, just in case you lost.
Oh.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Good to see you.
But, Misses, I don't have anything else for, for you other than.
Um, but just one other note, I didn't, uh, talked about the AMD sidewalks. Did go to Morris Township last night, and they are, um, continuing to prove. Um, provide good service to their, their people. Uh, in the township, making some tough decisions on some of their projects. Uh, I do intend to go to Monroe Township tonight, and because with that, everybody, meeting was moved. To tonight, instead of last night, otherwise I would have been there last.
So.
Yes, someone wasn't going to be there, so they decided to do that. Um, and then, say, Jason, you don't have anything. Then, uh, we're down to, um, public comment, and, and let me reframe what I've said in the past. Has to be about county business. Has to be about county business, can't be anything about Drenda's personal life. Um so do you have anything you wanna comment about on the on county business? Yes, then say, state your name, where you're from, please.
Second, there's something I would, um and now I'm gonna call you out on that part of your um policy. It doesn't have to be about county business, so.
Yeah, we're in, we're in the process of changing that.
But I'm just gonna bring up to both you two, Barry and Bill, I appreciate what you guys said a couple weeks ago. I haven't been able to make it back. That this has affected you. It has affected you in your daily lives. And as a community member, I apologize for that, because I I know you're not gonna get an apology from somebody else. It's sad that you have been put in this situation. I don't agree with this situation. It is not fair to you. You cannot get county business done as you need to. Um. I was looking on the website this morning and I noticed there were some changes to some committees. Whoever made those decisions to remove Ms. Cassie off of the Children's First Council, I appreciate that. She has no business being anywhere near anything to do with children at this point. Um with that said, I would also like to state that Knox County does stand with victims. It is clear that Ms. Cassie does not, because if she actually did care about the victim, she wouldn't be here in this position. She would be at her home. Taking care of her most of the, one of the biggest, her own daughter, and she's not. Um and so she's here thinking it's all about her, and it isn't. It is about the victims of this county, it is about the victim, victims of Licking County. It's about the victims of her own church for monetary fraud that has been going on, alleged monetary fraud, I will say, that has been going on. This is not fair to Knox County. Again, we have a black mark on Knox County because of her actions, what she has chosen to do. That is county business. This is not good for our county. And again, I just want to say, you two have the support of Knox County to continue doing what you're doing. She couldn't even find where our fairgrounds are. What commissioner doesn't know where our fairgrounds are? What commissioner doesn't know where the depot is? What commissioner doesn't know how to get out of the service center from the prosecutor's office? That's sad. I also want to reiterate, I did ask Ms. Cassie um last time I was here. About yeah, doing evening meetings. What she had said to me both was Bill and Barry didn't want them. That's what was said, and I said, okay, well, then you need to let your constituents know about that. Her reply to me was, I don't need to know my, I don't need to let my constituents know anything. And Darcy heard that too, Drenda, actually, so you can laugh all you want, but you've said that now multiple times, so. Thanks, Bill. I appreciate it.
Do you have anything? Yeah, and say your name, where you're from.
My name's Tammy Brown, and I live in Pachacola, but my husband and I have been looking at buying some property in Centerburg to build on. So we can be closer to our grandchildren and help get them back and forth to their sports and after school events. I also did work at Faith Life Church. And my, my grandfather spent forty years of his life as a county commissioner where I grew up. My father was the director of agriculture in county that I grew up, so very familiar with. How all of this works and and it tends to be more of a small community minded. Everyone supports each other. You show up at the county fair, you buy kids' pigs and cattle and that sort of thing. And I am very concerned with Drenda being in this position. Because I worked for her at the church and it was a really horrible, horrible experience. I myself had gotten custody of my grandson, who was not even two years old. And I worked tremendous amount of hours that I was never paid for for the women's conference. I had my daughter's cheer team come in and do the opening act, because nobody would come for the opening act. And it was two days before your conference, Drenda. And Watkins Memorial Cheer Team came and opened for that. I never would have brought my daughter and the eighteen girls that came to open for that, to that church, had I known. What was taking place. I now have parents that my daughter cheered with, calling and asking me. What is going on? Our kids were in that church. Were they exposed to Tom? So I don't think that she belongs here. I don't see her having the servant's heart for the community that my dad and my grandpa put in countless hours. I I just, I don't wanna move to Knox County knowing that this is somebody that you have. Feeding the way.
Okay, so we need to go into an executive session in order to uh have a discussion about purchase. And sale of property, so take a motion for that. And then call the roll.
Commissioner Lester.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Burford.
Yes, so we will be going into executive session. Uh we will officially adjourn after executive session, but we have no other business to conduct after executive session. And no action to be taken.